I'd like to call a board water works board meeting for January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty at seven oh nine P M. Please stand to the pleasure of the board.
Our pleasure to the ladies of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Water Works Board consists of three members of the town council. Mr. Troxel, would you please call the roll call?
We have a member of the town council, Johnson.
Here.
And the second member will be Kevin Towns.
Present.
And the third member is President Water Ward Rockford.
Present. The first item on the agenda are the minutes of the December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, and December thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, public meetings.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries through to zero. Next on the agenda is claims. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims.
So move on claims.
All in favor?
Aye.
Claims are passed through to zero. Next on the agenda are reports. Any additional reports, Mr. Volker?
No reports.
Council members?
Nope.
Next, old business? There is no old business. New business? There is no new business. At this time, is there any business from the floor regarding water works issues? Please step up. This meeting is adjourned. And we will now move into the redevelopment board debate.
Call or the redevelopment information meeting for Wednesday, January fifteenth, seven eleven P M. Troxel, would you bring in the other members to the roll call, please? Sure. Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Gassler?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Minutes of the December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, public meeting.
So move to term.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion on the minutes? Very young, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. As is five zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Sir, pleasure of the board.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As is five zero. Thank you. Any reports from the staff?
No reports.
Thank you. Council members? Very young, we have no old business. We have no new business. At this time, I'll take business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? This meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call the utility board meeting to order at seven twelve for Wednesday, January fifteenth. I'll accept the same roll call we had in redevelopment. So we'll go to the minutes of the December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, and December thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, public meeting. Pleasure of the board.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Very young, all of us in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Are there any other additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure of the board.
Move to approve claims.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Very young, all of us in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Reports, any reports from staff?
We do have a report from Mr. Simstead on these things.
All right, Neil, go ahead.
Mr. President, we have an issue at the wastewater plant and a portion of the Sheroville sanitary sewer conveyance system that is upstream of the metering facility that's in a state of imminent failure right now. It's three runs of thirty-six inch reinforced concrete pipe that the public works staff and the wastewater staff found towards the end of last year. We are currently working with staff and Sheroville Public Works has been monitoring the condition of the pipes. And they, along with the wastewater staff, have prepared a bypass plan for that solution should we have a failure within any of those three pipes. Those two departments are also coordinating efforts for us to be able to access the pipes, for them to be able to monitor the condition, videotape, and confirm the issues that we need to prepare a plan to replace that, those three sections of pipe. And during our investigations, we'll be working with the town manager and his staff, and those two departments and their staff, to prepare a feasible solution for this immediate issue.
Do we have a necessary cost?
We do not. We are at the point right now where over the past week, we've determined that there is an issue that is in need of immediate repair and we're working forward to find the best solution for that and most cost-effective and timely solution for that project.
Very good. May I have a motion from one of the members?
A motion to approve authorization before with the fact finding of the project. Mr. Simstead, Mr. Volker, all those needed to be involved with the project.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
President.
Mr. Chairman. I think it would be appropriate for the utility board to declare this an emergency repair. It would authorize us to put together a plan involving four bids to do this repair on an emergency basis.
All amend by motion.
We have a member. This is chair, second.
Who's second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Austin?
May I also suggest that, and on this record, we may certainly have appropriate specifications sufficient to secure several proposals for this emergency project.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Oh, there is none other old business or new business, so I'll take any business from the floor regarding utilities. Any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor regarding utilities? Very young, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening, I'd like to call the town council meeting for January fifteenth, Wednesday, at seven seventeen P M. Roll call, Mr. Troxel, you can call roll call for the council members. Include the department heads for the roll call, please.
Sure. We will start with the, we have Fire Chief Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Fire Chief Meyer.
Present.
We have Police Chief Zabrocky.
Here.
And Deputy Chief Police Chief Gassior.
Here.
We have, we have town engineer representing East Engineering, Mr. Neil Simstead. Water Works Director Jeff Hewitt.
Here.
Director of Operations Jim Gorman.
Here.
Town Manager Bob Volker.
Here.
Court Secretary Robin Teal.
President.
And we have our town attorney, Dave Osh.
President.
All kind of, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the December eleventh and December thirtieth, public meetings.
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Move to approve claims?
Second.
We have a motion in a second on claims, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Reports?
No reports.
Mr. Volker? Mr. Hewitt?
No report.
Chief Patterson?
No report.
Deputy Chief Meyer?
Not here.
Chief Zabrocky?
Not here.
Deputy Chief Gassior?
Not here.
Any reports from council members? Any reports from council members? I have, I have one, just one comment that I'd like to, to, to bring up. And Bob, can you please just give us some history? We lost, we lost a gentleman in town here, Mr. Richard Tebow, who's been a big part of Sheroville along with his family. And Bob, can you give us some history of what Rich Tebow has done for Sheroville?
Um, sure, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tebow was a prominent developer in the town of Sheroville. It's about everything you see on the west side of forty-one, his development company had handled. Villas Isar, the Home Depot in ours. The, you know, all of the developments that happens on that side of the street. Even the old, everybody remembers Salver's Teddy Land. He was also a partner with the Salver family to develop that site after Salver was closed down and Salver passed away. So just about everything you see was, was pretty involved. And prior to that, I think the Tebow family was involved in, of course, the four owners in Sheroville were under control of the Tebow family. Everybody remembers the eight-four landlord, that was a part of the Tebow, Tebow Trust. So he was pretty prominent all through in shaping the course or the face of Sheroville, especially among the commercial corridor. Did also, he marked as residential development, you have Stonebridge, Amber Fields. Those were all Tebow developments, partnership with residential home builders. So he certainly put his mark on the town of Sheroville. His family is still involved, his two sons, Miranda and John, are still involved in Tebow endeavors here in northwest Indiana. So he certainly will be best, if there is a funeral service or memorial service for him, I think, on February the eighth, at two o'clock in the afternoon.
Thank you, Bob. And at this time, we'll just take just a moment of silence. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I want to say I'd like to mention that, for the record, that Mr. Troxel is here today.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman?
Third time's a charm.
One, one thing I didn't, didn't mention is the Tebow Preserve, which is, was, is a natural area behind Stonebridge subdivision. That was donated by Mr. Tebow in memory of his wife Carol.
That's right. Thank you. Okay, no, any other comments from the council? We'll move on. First item on the agenda is, is there any public comments tonight regarding agenda items? Public comments regarding agenda items? If not, we'll, we'll move right into our first item, old business. Old business is ordinance nineteen fifty and ordinance amending Sheroville town code specifically, town code section seven dash twenty-seven, entitled building permit mandatory conditions, revealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts that are up in conflict here with and all matters related here too. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Paul Matier from the Building Trades to step up and give us a brief word on that. I appreciate you stuck, appreciate you came here tonight.
Be as brief as I can. Randy Paul Matier, businessman for Northwestern Indiana Building and Construction Trades Council. We're an umbrella organization of all the trade unions. We cover Lake Porter, Newton, and Jasper County. Roughly have forty thousand working men and women in those four counties that we represent. As you can see tonight, how important this ordinance is, we have workers from the Indiana Kentucky Ohio Regional Council Carpenter's present, along with their business representative, Eric Uhas. So I'll give you a quick overview of the ordinance. If you guys have any questions, feel free to stop me during it. If not, like, right now, everybody has my, yes, sir.
Can you see if the mic is on? I don't think it's turned on. I can hear you, but, however.
Here it goes. Okay, so I'm gonna start to read a quick, so payroll fraud. Payroll fraud is a process of falsely labeling employees as independent contractors or paying them cash under the table. And this does happen rampantly in the construction industry. It's not a union or non-union thing. In fact, when these ordinances start getting passed, one of my first phone calls was from one of my close friends who happens to be a non-uni contractor. He just hasn't seen the light yet. He may be union one day. But anyway, non-uni contractor called me and said, "Thank you for passing this ordinance because it's helping me also." Because he does pay the proper taxes, the workers' comp, social security, and all the withholdings that you're supposed to pay as a scrupulous contractor. But some contractors don't do that. They pay their employees cash under the table, or as like we see in the Chesterton deal. Young man was killed, died, I don't wanna say murdered, but he was, he fell off the ladder. They just had, did not have workers' comp, so who incurs that bill? Well, the taxpayers incur that bill. Roughly covered, it costs the state of Indiana about half a billion dollars a year according to our last study. And that's a lot of money. So these contractors are not paying into workers' comp, social security, unemployment insurance, state, local, and federal income tax. It's costing the country in the five hundred billion dollar market. So this is a big, big problem. A lot of these laws are already on the books, but we, we know it's up to the enforcement of these laws. So basically, what this ordinance does is, somebody can file a complaint with their building department. I don't wanna freak out Volker or Hewitt or anybody here. It's not come from some, on the town. They filed, they filed a complaint, make it public knowledge, we'll get the information, and we turn it over to the, like, Department of Labor, Bernie Carter. I did have meetings with prosecutor Carter, I had meetings with prosecutor Durham in Porter County. They have agreed to prosecute this. And it's not like you're gonna get a bunch of complaints coming in every day. Somebody's pissed off, or, excuse my language, somebody's not happy with their contractor and they wanna go in and file a complaint. There can be a sworn affidavit that's filled out under the, you know, penalties perjury. You can work with the town attorney on that. As all the ordinances that were passed so far to date, we've had like two or three complaints that we're working on right now. Our, the carpenter staff, my staff at the Building Trades is open to you guys. We need them free of charge, obviously, just like with responsible bidding ordinance and the project labor agreement. So I just urge support of this ordinance. I appreciate the town of Sheroville taking this on. I always feel like I'm in front of the confines when I come over here. You guys are a working class town. We appreciate, appreciate you guys. It doesn't go forgotten. Now, I'll just give you a couple of quick things with the ordinance that stand out, that also makes people a little bit rest easier. It's two hundred and fifty thousand or more, okay? So if there's a build out, or something going on in town, we're not gonna be chasing around fifty thousand dollar projects. It's just, you know, it's a waste of time. So two hundred and fifty thousand or more, this ordinance will kick in. We're not going after the residential market, let's be clear on that. Five units or more, which is basically an apartment complex and/or hotel. So your fourplexes and duplexes are not covered under this ordinance, which I think makes, makes a lot of people happy. It does apply to all the construction managers, general contractors, subcontractors, or whatever tier that are working on that project. We would come in and file a complaint with the building department. Basically, all, Mr. Volker, or whoever you designate would just request certified payroll. And then we will fill out FOIA requests, take that information, go over it, and do what we gotta do. Turn it into the prosecutor, Department of Labor, whatever. The state does recognize it's a problem. It was in summer study two times already. So they're looking at ways to curtail this that's going on. New Jersey actually has a task force, payroll fraud task force for the state, because they know how big of a problem this is. So we're attacking it on a local level. That way, when something starts happening here, the state gets, okay, well, you know, you guys are taking care of it out there. How can we help? That's basically what the governor's office wants. If anybody has any specific or direct questions, I'll be happy to answer them. It's only a couple of page ordinance. I'm sure, Mr. Austin, you vetted it, looked at it. Is there anything that you were confused or anything on there that, that may be?
On the way.
Huh? Nothing? Perfect. Okay. So with that, I mean, if anybody else has any questions, concerns, comments, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, maybe tonight you're laying in bed and you're thinking about something. Hopefully, you're not thinking about me, but if you think about something with the ordinance, give me a buzz. Everybody has my cell phone number and I heard support of this ordinance tonight. And I wanna thank the town of Sheroville once again for being a friend of labor.
Thank you, Mr. Randy. Paul Matier.
Thanks, Randy.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Troxel.
That being said, since there are no more discussions, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance nineteen fifty.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt also, sir.
In second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yes.
If these gentlemen from the union don't have anything to do next month, they certainly would like to have them here. Nice to see a forum.
Hate to see Mr. Troxel in his new position.
You're gonna stick around, aren't you, for the rest of the meeting?
Yeah, we'll hang on. Every moment, Mr. Colonel.
Okay, we're gonna move into new business. First item on the agenda is item eight, consider acceptance of the fire service contract between Saint John Township and the town of Sheroville for the year twenty twenty. Mr. Volker or Mr. Patterson?
Mr. Volker.
Mr. Patterson?
Just starting a contract at the, over the Saint John Township. They submitted it. We have signed it, and we're just looking for approval to accept it. And this is a fire contract for all the unincorporated areas in the town of Sheroville that we cover for them.
I suggest that there is a motion that it be subject to including view of conversation.
I saw a motion, Mr. President.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a way of a second. Including Mr. Austin's.
Add a pardon to that, please.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item B is consider acceptance of attorney contract between Austin Kyper and Josias PC and the town of Sheroville.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Item C is consider acceptance of attorney contract between Burke and Stodgen and Carberry L L P and the town of Sheroville.
Sheriff, should that kind of thing also have any review? They couldn't pass that on.
The staff got it.
I'm on the fence in that one.
Item C is consider acceptance of attorney contract between Burke and Stodgen and Carberry L L P and the town of Sheroville.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Item D is consider acceptance of the engineer contract between East Engineering and the town of Sheroville.
So move.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Item E is consider acceptance of approval of a contract between the town of Sheroville and Providence Homes as regency incorporate for a contribution or payment to improvements to the Burke Street project south of yours thirty in the town of Sheroville. Mr. Volker?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Osh and I are still working on this. I would suggest that you table that. Motion for, until next one.
Motion to defer.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to defer item E, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Item F is approved uniform land acquisition offer for ninety-four hundred Clark Street for the Pennsy Greenway Trail Phase Four with a park board recommendation of four zero. Mr. Volker?
This, this is what's kind of the known as the Eagle's property that's great at the, on railroad right of way at Clark Street. It's the terminus of the Pennsy Trail as it goes through Sheroville, connects it into Brown Point. It's a parcel that we need for Phase Four of Pennsy Project. And I'm looking for authorization to make offer on that property.
Is this for the trailhead block?
There'll probably be a trailhead right there.
I would move to grant authority to make an offer for acquisition of ninety-four hundred Clark Street with Pennsy Greenway Trail Four as per the park board recommendation four zero.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Item G is consider approval letter of financial support and submittal of application for the community crossing grant for, for year twenty twenty dash one funds, including authorization of saying by the town council president. Mr. Hewitt?
Public Works Department is currently working on the submittal of another CCG application for two million dollars worth of work, for which we are hoping we get state participation, fifty percent of that. We are seeking authorization from the council to have the town council president sign the letter of financial support for said submissions.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Some move?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item H is consider approval for the, for the Sheroville Police Department to suspend the hiring list and immediately hire state certified applicants, approved by the safety board four zero, resolution twenty twenty dash one. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mrs. Zabrocky.
What this is, is due to pending retirements of three officers and replacement of three officers we had in twenty nineteen. We're asking for a need to hire experienced police officers. That's why we ask for the emergency hire, so we can get them on the streets until the other three applicants that are currently in the police academy would be released. And they won't be released totally from training until the end of summer. So that's why it was asked to have the emergency hire, so we can do our replacements. The replacements are for three officers that are currently either in a drop or they're gonna be retiring. And the last one would be retiring would be April second, so that's why we're in the need of to replace them now.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President, move to approve the emergency hires for the police department?
Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance of donations. Mr. Troxel, would you have the pleasure of reading the donations, please?
Yes, thank you. These are donations accepted as of twelve thirty-one of two thousand and nineteen. The donation fund for animal control, we have Do Good, Be More, cash contribution of six hundred and forty-five dollars. Event bright in care of Do Good, Be More, seven ninety-one sixty-six with cash donation. We have three in-kind donations from your Craig Russen. We have two gift cards at twenty dollars each for the animal control. And then an in-kind donation also from Craig Russen, five thousand two hundred and thirty-four pounds of pet food, which has an approximate in-kind value of eleven thousand four seventy-three forty-one. Our total contributions animal control, ending twelve thirty-one nineteen, was twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and seven cents. Donation to the Veterans Memorial, Rayland Roman purchased a brick order for fifty dollars. The next donation fund to fire equipment from the Sheroville Central Lions Club donated a total of two hundred and fifty dollars. The donations to the VIPS program from Edbridge. We have a donation, cash donations of one hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. And a national night out donation from the business Sweet Frog in town here, donated one hundred and ninety dollars. We have a total of in-kind donations, eleven thousand five hundred thirteen thousand forty-one cents. Monetary donations, two thousand eighty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. With a grand total donations for the month of December, thirteen thousand six oh two eighty-nine, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and a second for donations, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. At this time, I'd like to open a business from the floor. Any comments or any business from the floor, please step up. Yes.
Hello, Catholic of Bruce, Saint John Township trustee, and I just wanted to thank you for approving the agreement between Saint John Township and Sheroville, obviously with the approval of your attorney. But anyway, I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Any other business on the floor?
Thank you again for passing the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Matier.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Colonel Antonio Daggett. I am a resident here of northwest Indiana, recently retired Army Colonel. And I'm just out on a fact finding mission, just finding out what's going on in Sheroville and how, what the needs are here in Sheroville. And want to be someone who is knowledgeable. and want to be, uh, someone who is knowledgeable about what's going on in our various towns and communities. My wife, uh, the mother of my, of my ten children, is here with me as well, and so we just thank you for an opportunity to address you all this evening.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ten children, God bless.
Any other comments from the floor? Any other comments? No comments, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.